I would call meeting to order. I'd like to welcome Mr. Whitson into the room.
Thank you.
And let's all stand for the pledge allegiance and honor of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to go straight into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak will please be recognized. When you come up to speak to the board, you'll give us your name, the district you're in. I appreciate it. We'll limit the public comment to five minutes. And please remember, this is a public comment, so we won't be replying. This is public comment. Anyone interested in public comment? That's called for public comment. Hearing none, I will close public comment. And we'll go into the next agenda item, which is Company Four forensic audits. Mr. Whitson.
Mr. Whitson, I'm not sure what you're saying. Speak. So at your last meeting, you authorized a forensic audit to be conducted of the company for financial records, and you asked county administration to investigate how much something like that might cost and what it would involve. And so we have contacted three audit firms in Virginia and have learned from them that a true forensic audit, the underlying premise of a true forensic audit is to prosecute. So if that is your goal, that would be when you would employ a forensic audit. And based on the feedback from the two of the three firms, we understand that just the initial review of documentation and initial report to you of their observations would entail between 50 and 85 hours at an hourly, very expensive hourly rate for an estimated total cost of $15,000 to $25,000 dollars for that cursory review. From the third firm that we contacted, after they heard the background information, which is all public information, the audits from Flint Hill, the police of the Virginia State Police investigators, latest status update, we learned from them that their suggestion would be more of taking a risk assessment approach rather than a forensic audit. Because ultimately, to them, it sounded like the situation was such that the goal is likely for improvement of the accounting and the record-keeping methods, and that the risk assessment would be a better approach for that. In doing that, the firm would perform a risk assessment of the internal controls or lack thereof over financial compliance within the organization, identify high-risk areas, potential gaps in the current procedures, and align those with what should be best practices, and then define what they call roadmap ahead of what needs to happen to close those identified gaps. The firm then would make a presentation of their operations and recommendations to the board supervisors. And the quote received for that risk assessment is not to exceed $30,000 for the Flint Hill Fire Department. They added, the auditors then added, that a risk assessment for additional volunteer fire rescue companies would be quoted at not to exceed $20,000 each. And for the board and public's information, we did include in the agenda packet tonight the outcome of such a risk assessment that was done in Spotsylvania County, which was patterned after one that occurred in Falkir County. And what came out of that was board adopted fiscal policies related to the governance of the volunteer fire rescue organizations. And so with that, we have to answer your questions.
I don't see any point in doing that. And that's what we're paying products and farmer cocks do when they do their orders. And our recommendations about improvements or whether they align with financial accounting practices that are acceptable.
So they have identified where there is a shortfall in the compliance with what would be generally accepted accountable principles. But I understand it from the reading the audit findings that they also have not been provided full documentation and information that allows them to base an opinion, an audit opinion, on anything. And so that's why all four of those recent audits have been no-opinion audits.
What was the, what was the date of the last Robinson Farmer Cox audit? Do we know?
It was for the calendar 2020.
Okay. So to me, it seems like a logical next step. If, I don't like at all the notion that this type of forensic audit would be premised on a goal prosecution. That's not at all what I thought we were headed toward. And so I wonder if an interim audit or a near-term audit on the part of Robinson Farmer Cox, with them digging deeper into what they've already reviewed, that led to their sort of qualified opinion. Because I mean, they offer opinions about deficiencies, et cetera. So why not, why not just call them back and tell them to do the next step, which is to formulate an opinion based on more thorough review of what they've already seen in these cursory form? I think that would be...
I would say the first reason is that they are terribly behind in what they owe us right now, which is the calendar 2021 audits, which were just flipped into, you know, were the calendar 2023.
Three counties.
22 just ended, right? So they should be starting with 22 audits right now, and they haven't delivered the 21. And that's in spite of our rather incessant requests. So I'm not sure that they will be doing the fire audits in the future, given their performance over the last year, and I'm not sure we want to centralize work with them. We need to go to market, I think, on future clients for the fire companies.
I mean, just a thorough audit by someone qualified to do it, does, we don't have to continue to give all our business to Robinson Farmer Cox if they're not getting a job done.
Yeah, we did an RFP several years ago. There's one year left option on that, and it's our option to extend or not. I do think there is great value in looking at the Falkir financial management policy, Spotsylvania policy, and considering whether some of those lessons learned and put into practice in those localities could help you and help the companies standardize. And they would come by way of fire levy guidelines and procedures that our agreement, the county's agreement with the companies and the association envision that the board will adopt those guidelines and policies through which funding is provided.
If they're guidelines and policies that are already being used in another public entity, we wouldn't have to come and hit there.
Yeah, so adapting them might be, might not require the risk assessment. It's possible that they could be adapted without that. Although all localities are different and how they operate are a little bit different. So I don't know very well, I'm not sure if Bonnie knows, the value-added of bringing in this third party to take another look at everything and make recommendations.
Well, the way I see it, if I could just deliver a point, you either do a forensic audit to see what happened in the past, or you don't. And if you want to move forward with that knowing that, then you can get those policies without spending this $30,000, and we can just say that this is supposed to be implemented. Or that's the end of, you know, for public funding for X, Y, Z companies.
Ron, I think that's right, and I think it just comes down to whether we're all comfortable moving ahead and not looking back. Because I only brought up the idea of sort of a standard audit to look deeper into what is already been reviewed, I guess, if we were to focus on the past, but, I mean, your points are well taken.
It's a single role.
You're right, absolutely.
Well, I would argue that it's probably, it's probably both or future. Right? I don't think you only want to do a forensic audit, you probably also want to implement best practices in all cases. That would be our recommendation. But I do agree that it isn't a necessity to, to dig into the past records to an extent that would allow prosecution or something, if that's not the goal of the board, and we, all we want is a viable company, then the past is not as important as the future.
Well, I mean, I said it at the meeting when we talked about it, I didn't really see much point in doing a forensic audit until the results of the Virginia State Police investigation are in. If you read the letter from the officer, it actually says, "To get the kind of answers you're seeking in total, you would have to do a forensic audit." It doesn't say, "Do a forensic audit," or "I highly recommend you do a forensic audit." And I don't think a lot of people understand what a forensic audit is. I live at my friend, he used to do them for a living, and unfortunately, he passed away years ago. So, so I mean, I think that there's diligence and savvy in saving some money, hopefully, and not going that next step, based on the results of the ongoing investigation. And in the meantime, I mean, we have a body that works on financial policies with the departments for us. Why don't we refer these guidelines to the fire levy board and ask them for input?
Yeah. I think now that Ms. Jewell has kind of framed this as a premise on prosecution, I definitely, that definitely turns off that idea, at least for me. And I, I don't think adding stress to a company already feeling stressed is going to help us from an operation standpoint. But my goal, and I think this goes to your point, Christine, about referring this maybe to fire levy or some other appropriate body or staff, to implement some guidelines going forward, at least gives citizens confidence that when they make donations, generous donations to fire companies like Company Four, that they know that money is being handled appropriately and properly. And that's, that's one part of, of just tidying things up across the board, if we can achieve that. I think it's important for all companies that citizens have the confidence of making donations and knowing that money's not being misappropriated in any way. So maybe we can get that done through this Falkir-Spotsylvania policy.
It's not just a donation, though. We've been fire levy tax, that $20 that we have, we have taken, the county has taken money from the taxpayer.
Yes. Yep.
I mean, that's...
So two parts, obviously.
And very, very important that we know that the monies are being spent properly and by every company, not just Company Four or the others.
And I feel, I feel like the word of the fire levy board, to date, is protected against a large spending misuse or misappropriation of those funds, but you're exactly right. I mean, we're talking public dollars and private dollars going into these volunteer companies, and it's serious money. And I think we all can agree that, that those funds should be handled as carefully and responsibly as possible.
Ms. Jewell raised a point today, but I have a question. When you said Robinson Farmer Cox said that they weren't given enough information, or what the information that they were given, it wasn't enough to make a recommendation. Is there some idea or chance, a question, that some information has been withheld?
I think it's hard to, hard to say that, and I've not been annually in that chain. I know that the last several years annually, as information is needed to be provided to the auditors, most of the companies provide the information that's needed. When it's come to Company Four, the information would be provided, and it would be followed by this iterative process, "We also need this, we also need that, we also need this." And so I think some of that is disorganization and changing, you know, this is the treasurer this year, and it's a different treasurer next year, and it's a different treasurer the next year, and not an intent to withhold, but just don't know exactly what they had to do. That, that's what I think has happened. They don't, they don't provide their bank reconciliation, because they don't do bank reconciliations. So, you know, things like that. Because the treasurer is the new treasurer, and they don't, they need a treasurer, but they didn't, you know, they didn't know what job they had to do.
If I could just ask a question of one of the Company Four board members. Educate me, what kind of financial accounting system do you have currently? What type of software are you using? QuickBooks or?
They're using QuickBooks. We have a bookkeeper. She's using QuickBooks.
Okay.
And she just finished the fire levy.
Okay, so all revenue expenses are going into QuickBooks, and you have one person who is responsible for that task?
Yeah, we have a treasurer. His name is Joe. He pays the bills, and then he sends all of the bills that he pays to the treasurer, I mean, to the bookkeeper.
How long is that QuickBooks system in place?
Maybe a year or so.
They use Quicken for years, and that was a strong recommendation of the auditor to use QuickBooks.
It's Quicken, it's Quicken.
Whether you've switched to QuickBooks or not, I don't know, but that has been a recommendation.
Yeah, it's whatever she's using, Quick and QuickBooks.
If she, they're using a bookkeeper, they are using a bookkeeper for the last year, more likely than not.
Okay. Thanks.
So really, the question for me is twofold. How do you start forward, feeling like you've got a clean slate without an audit that has been returned at all? And then on the other side of that, at some point, when you have multiple incompletes or whatever term of use for the audits that are not coming back finished, shouldn't there be some sort of trigger to this board that says, "There's a problem?"
Well, that is my other point, why I think even though they're busy and they're behind, if there are unresolved parts of their opinion that could be resolved with deeper digging and more documentation, and we're not, it's not a wild goose chase, and it's actually something that can be accomplished, and that it would be productive and show us something productive, then we ought to compel the auditor in turn to finish that work, to remedy any past deficiencies, or at least understand the reasons for them. That's kind of where it started out tonight. Because I too feel like, you know, it's sort of left, leaving something undone, and obviously we have responsibility to taxpayers, to Ron's point, to the fire levy front. I just don't know mechanically that's going to work, given the backlog of work with... So I don't want to, I don't want to create a monster here, but I think you and I, it seems, agree on that.
I would again state that having more detailed and clear policies that the fire levy board, the board and staff can administer, would probably include more defined cause-effect relationships with information that's submitted or not submitted, if they come back a certain way or not, and then it would be more clear if then in the document.
What I don't understand, I mean, it seems like this was used frequently the last couple days where I've been working. It's like we were over-engineering. I mean, the fire companies, fire rescue companies, whatever, the companies have a budget, they have income from various sources, and they have time going. And I think we should have always been seeing that, whatever that is in total. And I'm getting this feeling that maybe that's not happening?
Well, not always one specific company, because we're talking about the fire levy board needs certain guidelines. So are we saying that all these years, over 20 now, that we've had this fire levy tax, that we don't have the company saying, "This is our income from various sources, whether it's county taxes, whether it's, you know, a fundraiser, we've got this income, and this is our outgoing, and this is what we've got left in the bank"? We're not doing that?
I can't go into anything more than about five years. And of course, in that five years, the board adopted the services agreement that standardized some of the processes, and I'm not sure what was in place before, that memorialized that the fire levy board would develop guidelines that would be approved by the board supervisors, and those guidelines were standardized to assist the companies to put together packages so to submit for, early around, before the agreement, request for reimbursement, and afterwards, documentation to support future budgets. The information I have from my office on past audits indicates that, yes, there have been audits conducted over many years that capture all of the revenues and expenses from the companies, how much is in their bank, various bank accounts, and record those in one place. I am aware, from my five years, of one company with multiple years where the auditing company couldn't, did their best to give that information, but couldn't say definitively that it was accurate, because there was enough holes or issues with the documents that were provided for them to say, "We believe this is accurate." Everybody else, they've said, "We've got all the information, we understand that this is a factual representation of the bank balances." But one company, Company Four, they couldn't do that four years in a row.
But your point, I think the fire levy, I haven't been on the fire levy board, but my understanding is that it's largely a reconciliation of operating expenses, which is what the county, the county reimbursement is. So it's, it would follow that fire levy board likely would not necessarily see a complete picture of financial activities for each company, because the fire levy is really not looking at the balance sheet side of the financial statement and looking...
That's right, it's looking at the weird.
And it's looking at the expense part of the P and L, so...
Only portion, right? They're not looking at the capital side.
But the auditors should have been...
They do, and they do. And so if you pulled up one of the audits that's in the library of board docs right now, you'll see a balance sheet. It's all framed around the balance sheet, showing all the expenditures and revenues in that calendar year, various bank accounts for that company, and different companies have different, some have a capital account, apparatus account, a lease auxiliary account or whatever. And then there are different comments related to that, whether it's passive with the cash receiving or this or that, and, or information that the auditor just couldn't get their hands on or couldn't reconcile, and which modifies their opinion or leaves them to make no opinion as to the accuracy of the information.
Well, and Company Four bring QuickBooks online, and I know of at least one other company that...
I know they're supposed to, I don't know if that happened and they would have to.
I know of another company that it's sort of been making do with lesser software with something like QuickBooks. It makes an auditor's job that much easier, because in terms of reconciliation to bank accounts and that sort of thing, it's all done. It's a, it's a closed system, and you just hand, you basically generate an accounting file. So that has to be part of our standardization of...
Yes, some of our companies submit a flash drive with the QuickBooks.
Yeah, and just hand it off. So whatever, whatever means of Falkir, Spotsylvania, Spotsylvania might be, certainly, we need to ensure that every company has basic financial accounting software they're using. And standardization across companies certainly makes sense, too.
Which, which in all likelihood is going to be an operational expense, right? That the board supervisors have said it's a, it's a reasonable taxpayer-funded expense to make sure you have that thing.
So if we were to, I'm just trying to think through some practical action here that we can take to just move on.
Well, the fire levy board meets twice over the next month or so. They're meeting on the second, and then, and I think on the 26th, maybe, to have an organizational meeting and then review the bills. So if there was a referral to them, they could receive it and then digest what they wanted to do next, and possibly have set whatever meetings they need to do to start moving through. I would suggest that implementation of the policies needs to be probably properly timed. If it changes how they're accountable for things or reporting things, you'd want that probably on a half-year cycle or something like that.
So we have till June 30th?
Maybe so. But, but they ought to know well in advance that July 1, this is the new rulebook.
And it does seem like the fire levy board would be logical by to kind of wrestle with a percentage of the...
I think their input would be valuable, staff input would be valuable, reaching out to these other localities and experience that they've had. They may have implemented these policies and have lessons from since then. And then, you know, the boards probably would want to, there might be some of this that's really policy-driven, that the board might want to really be involved in those details. I think it's probably a number of different interested parties.
I think the motion that we refer this to the fire levy board to gauge their interest in taking on this material and insist us in...
Fiscal management policy.
Fiscal management policy and establishing reasonable risk assessment guidelines.
A second.
So, I mean, I think that's got to just...
Yeah, and I think Mr. Curry mentioned staff from Old Manano. You want to just adjust that motion?
I'm sure if the fire levy board or our staff assists us, that they will be capable of reaching out to staff.
Okay. My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the closed meeting regarding consultation with legal counsel.
I'm sure, I just want to raise a question. I don't, I know we had a closed session as part of our, time flies, January meeting, rating of the board supervisors, and I know we, we did receive very thorough legal guidance during that closed session, and I just wondered, to the benefit of the public, if we really need to enter into a closed session. I'm reluctant to do so unless we have some component to further hash out details. We've seen draft resolutions, et cetera, and so I don't, I don't know that it would be necessary to go behind closed doors.
Only if members have specific legal questions. I don't think so. I think we've covered most of it.
I don't.
I'm... I'm the Rabah Headet County Board of Supervisors, convening a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically illegal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. It's 2.2-3711A8. Subject matter of the closed meeting will be, one, consultation with legal counsel regarding fire and fire rescue slash, and a services agreement in Company Four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate, I think we've already talked with our county attorney, so I'm inclined to vote against a closed session.
If you have some specific questions, you'd like to...
It's a big bite tonight. Y'all don't want to talk to our lawyer first?
Yeah, I kind of think it, it may be necessary, yes.
Any further discussion?
If I could, I think if any, any member, one member, has a question, then the public should do so.
Thank you for that. It would be a rule call not to...
I just need to know how everybody votes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
I'd vote aye as well.
Sorry to give you over time, my question's...
It's not the first time, it's all been my bill, it's a bit...
Anyone?
Unfortunately, I guess we have to look further a little downstairs.
You can clear the room, you need to clear the room, someone needs to clear the room.
Yep.
Let me please.
Do you certify that to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the board supervisors in closed meeting?
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Garnett?
Aye.
And I also. Actions related to the closed meeting?
I make a motion that we table the resolutions that are attached to the agenda this evening until we receive feedback from different bodies involved in fire rescue organizations to include the not limited to Fire Levy Board for discussion of how these resolutions will impact the finances of the county and what costs may be necessary to undertake these programs, the association, the chiefs, and the independent companies for fire rescue in Rabbit Head County. And also the Public Safety Committee.
I'd second that if we were to...
I mean, I would define 90 days agreeable.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Gray.
90 days agreeable to you or shorter?
I would think shorter.
60.
60.
Motion and a second, discussion?
I'd like to discuss.
There's a term, I think all the EMS providers here probably know it better than me, chain of survival, and I benefited from it. And I'm alive because it worked in my favor. And I'm really reluctant to get on my high horse after this recent experience, but we do have an issue with, with Company Four, and it serves a critical geographic area in our county. And if you read the draft resolution, one of the draft, both draft resolutions, it talks about a response time, goal response time of about eight minutes. And going back to this chain of survival idea, you have bystanders, hopefully who help people in need. I'm, I'm speaking specifically in my case about a cardiac event, but bystanders who might be able to perform CPR or be willing to try, and then obviously EMS response and then a hospital nearby. If you add up all of that together for the 350,000 people in the United States who have traumatic cardiac events, survival rate in an ideal scenario is about 10%. In my case, I had a bystander, my wife, and the firehouse was three blocks away from my childhood home, and they came within three minutes. And that's why I'm here and that's why my brain is intact. I recognize we live in a rural area and there are risks associated with that, and I know our volunteers are awesome and they do the best that they can with the terrain and the geographic limitations placed upon them. So accepting that this is a rural area and there are limitations and the response time of eight minutes is really not ideal. I don't want to be too pushy and say that, oh, well, everyone should be getting attention within three minutes. It's probably not realistic, but, but it's our job. I believe it's what I signed up for and that's to do everything possible to protect human health and safety. And to that end, in this chain of survival, if there, if there's a weak link and that eight-minute response time becomes something more than I really see as a problem, and we have excellent volunteer fire and rescue companies and they do an amazing job, but occasionally weaknesses arise, and I feel like we continue to hear about problems in Company Four. And, and so while I appreciate Ms. Smith, the need, your interest in gathering more information, I, I frankly can't imagine why we would wait any longer to take some action to, to fix that, what, what appears to be a weak link in the chain of survival. So that's, that's all I have to say. Sorry to interrupt you.
I certainly would not want to diminish anything that she said, but we've got, I think, Company Four, they have the hard role of, I think, their second duty in Daxton District. And I believe that, you know, citizens are being covered on that geographical area of the county. You've got 1400, you've got Chester Gap Company Nine with paid staff. So you've got paid staff, that, that's the deal there. Three is very active and has nothing to do with it, but they have the best carnival in the county right now. But folks in Scrabble, for instance, they don't have that eight-minute timeframe. So in all honesty, the folks that have lived in and around Company Four have a better chance of survival than folks already living and paying taxes in Scrabble. So I don't know, but the thing that I would like to say is that those resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, they weren't talked about by this board to be prepared and be ready for this meeting tonight. Our board didn't talk about that in, we didn't talk about that. And the names that I've heard mentioned to be appointed by the board, I've had no involvement in that as a board member. So they're really not, they're not board appointed. I've had no end in that as a board member. I don't know anything about the background of half of the things that I've heard. I'm really not prepared to support it at this point.
I would just like to say how glad I am that you're back with us tonight here, and I really do appreciate everything you said. I mean, I, I was very sick as a teenager and Company One probably saved my life more times than I care to remember. Very good volunteer rescue squad probably saved my sister's life on several occasions. I know they saved my stepfather's life on several occasions. I understand that there's a problem. I certainly don't mean to diminish the issue at hand. I do think there has been a lot of unfortunate sensationalism of what's been going on in Flint Hill, touching on the points that I appear, Mr. Whitson, Frasier, already mentioned. You know, we have more paid staff in the county than we've ever had before strategically positioned, as well as multiple squads that are doing very well. At the association meeting on Friday evening, I was the only supervisor there, but Company Five had a call the other night, they got three, there are six people out for a call. So we have redundancy in the volunteer system and paid staff. So I do understand the critical need to get people on the scene and get them on the scene quickly. I do understand the challenges of doing that in a rural environment. We have, we may not have rescue working out of Flint Hill right now, but we have very viable fire, fire response working out of Flint Hill right now, from all the accounts that I've heard, unless somebody knows something different. I haven't heard any complaints about the fire side of the house. So, and there's just the overall delicacy of the volunteer structure. If you, if you take a top-down leadership style, or do you want to engage from the bottom up? And it's been the tradition of the board to engage on all levels through the years. And I think this is a departure from that tradition, these resolutions. Not denying there's a problem, just saying this might not be the best answer.
I would like to say that if anybody has read the 2015 report, the 2019 strategic plan, and the other documents that we have that show how many people are actually running calls versus people that are on the roster, and how many people are actually fit tested with masks going onto a fire, all of that data is pretty in-your-face and pretty scary. And I don't believe putting our head in the sand and thinking that we are still fine and that nothing's changed since 2015 or 2018, we are not doing any of our citizens' service.
But we did the same.
That's not at all what we said. We said we should work up from the bottom, to my knowledge, Flint Hill fires have not had any complaints.
To my knowledge, complaints are not getting out. There's a difference.
I, to my knowledge, that there's not been any feedback on the fire side of Flint Hill.
Have you spoken with Mr. Polster or anybody that keeps the data on the fire going out?
I mean, I was at the association meeting on Friday night, it wasn't mentioned that.
I don't think they mentioned that at the association meeting.
I mean, my point is that, much like the letter to the editor that Mr. Jameson, who resides in my district, submitted to the Rabbit Head News, I mean, we need to do a diligent study and, and figure out exactly what needs to be addressed and what we should leave alone.
Yeah, I, I'm, to further your, your train of thought though, Chair, if this board were to adopt a one resolution where we, we appoint an entire new board of directors for a company, how does that address whether we have adequate number of responders getting out?
That would be their job.
Yeah, that's right. That would be their job. So we're, we're going to appoint a bunch of chiefs, if you will, and they will have no Indians. Because normally the companies are, if you will, Indians, and they appoint, elect their own chiefs, and we're, we're, this has never been mentioned before. And we found out that we don't know much about whether it's been done very often in the state. We're entirely a little ragged here.
I agree.
And the companies are a very close knit group of people.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to go on record and just remind everyone that I didn't say there was a problem. I said engage the other organizations we have at our disposal that we often look to for feedback, support, and expertise, and make sure that they also all feel like we are on the right track with this, and particularly that it doesn't undermine the volunteer system that we still do have in place, and it doesn't have any negative financial impacts for the county.
But the concerns that have arisen are not new concerns, and during that period of time, what, what input, ideas, alternative solutions have we received from anyone?
Well, it may just be an endorsement of one or the other of these ideas, but we did not even receive this as a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee. The Public Safety Committee's recommendations were twofold. One was to take, undertake a forensic audit, which we've already decided was not a good idea. And I say that with, with no offense to the Public Safety Committee, because I've been on that committee, and it's not an easy committee to make recommendations out of. The second recommendation of the Public Safety was to defund Company Four. We elected not to do that. So we are acting tonight with no, no feedback from any other body, including the Public Safety Committee. This is something that we have engineered and decided is a good idea all on our own.
We are the only ones responsible for it. At the end of the day, it's us.
Yes, but everyone else will pay the price for our decision if it's a bad one.
And we'll pay the price for all decisions made around us. That's what we're here to do.
I mean, I know that...
We're here to do the heavy lifting and the hard work.
But we haven't done that yet.
We're responsible.
But we haven't done any heavy lifting. This was an idea that just, that just came up and...
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but we, we didn't do any more than that. We didn't talk about having these resolutions on the agenda the last time we met. We didn't talk about having a slate of individuals to appoint.
We're responsible if people die.
We are, but as a board, we are a board...
We talked about this?
As a board, okay? I have had no involvement, zero.
I've had just as much as you have.
You've had no involvement in it?
No, I've had just as much as you've had, as much involvement as you have, I have. At the end of the day, the board of supervisors in each county is responsible for health and safety. If people die, it is my fault. It is your fault.
But you had as much involvement as I have.
Yes.
So you had, have had zero involvement in this decision tonight?
It's not zero. What do you mean? Like, sitting here talking? I haven't, I didn't say anything.
There is a slate of names that I was going to put forward earlier.
Did Mrs. Donnelly call you and tell you?
Yes.
Yeah, she called me and told me right before she called you.
But you had no involvement in it.
No, I didn't talk to any of them. It's not my district.
How was this a board decision then?
Because that's what we're doing right now, Ms. Fraser.
No.
At the last meeting, Mr. Curry said...
We can go in front of...
Just a sec. This is a, this is another one of these board of acquiescence things. You want us to agree with what you have put together, but we are supposed to be a board, a governing body, and I have had no involvement in it.
At the last meeting, Mr. Curry said, go out, eat the floor, come back, find some with names.
It's her district, she went and put a package together.
It affects, it affects my district too because of their second name.
Then you should be worried.
I am concerned, but the thing is, a list of names that somebody may put together is one thing, but you, you put them together and you want to elect them tonight.
But did you think that I had helped her with it?
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to find out.
I did not, and I'm sitting here now, she could have brought this slate before she called me and she told me right before she called you. She could have brought it to me tonight, and I would have sat here and said, you know what? It's her district, we're responsible. If this doesn't work, we're going to change it. Because I'm responsible, you're responsible, we all are.
Right.
The volunteers, the volunteers are in this with us, and I think that we all want to see them succeed.
Exactly.
That's all I want. I do not, when someone calls 911...
It's not happening.
We're responsible, and I take that very seriously. I do not volunteer. I am not on fire rescue, but I was elected to be responsible.
Absolutely.
And when she goes around, I understand what I'm saying, when she goes around her district, and this has been going on, not for three months, not for six months, not for 18 months, but for years, we, we need to change something. I, I belong to True 36 in Flint Hill. That's where I got my Eagle Scout merit badge. I have a really close connection with that fire company. I want to see it survive as volunteers, and I think, I think it can.
But this, I don't...
But if you keep doing the same thing that doesn't work, that's our fault.
I, I...
That's what I think.
The vote, if this vote goes down, then the vote will be to, to appoint a group of people that I have had no involvement in discussion with, or to look at their backgrounds, to look at their qualifications. So I have had no involvement in that, and I cannot support that at this time.
Well, I'd be with you because I'm in the same, I'm in the same boat. I don't either, but I'm taking what Debbie has done, said, okay, you've done your due diligence, this is your district, and yeah. You're right in the sense that if we vote on something and I say yeah, and it goes awry, that is my fault. I'm, I'm okay with that responsibility, just like I'm okay with the responsibility of citizens coming up to me and saying, 911 didn't work. That's your fault.
Well, I mean, I think I'd like to hear from staff about response times. I mean, are, what, are we improving on response times? Are there problems with certain companies getting out, or are there people whose needs are not being met? Because I'm, I'm unaware of that.
I think we're conflating issues here.
I would like to call to the question because we're not...
I asked a question of staff, is Stephanie going to answer my question?
Caught between here. I can tell you the Public Safety Committee...
I can tell you the Public Safety Committee has reviewed the response times at their meetings each quarter. All that meaning, all that information is posted to board docs. It shows those responses. The board would like me to pull up the last Public Safety Committee meeting. You can see the report that's attached.
Is it less than 25 minutes?
If you're asking me to pull this information up?
No, no.
I'm happy to do it, if that's what the board wants me to do. That's all our position, one board member asking me to do something.
Right. I mean, and the Public Safety Committee has already done its recommendations based on past districts, so...
But their recommendations were totally different than what we're doing tonight.
But they did their due diligence. They looked at the information. Over the past three or more years, since probably 2015, the numbers are not good. My citizens, when I walk around and talk to people in Wakefield District, want something to change. And to do the same thing over and over again, three, four, five years, let me finish, it's not going to change anything. We are going to have an accident that we will not be able to resolve.
Thing is, if your citizens, as you just called them, want to be changed, why didn't they join the fire department?
Because everyone I talked to, and it's been a lot in the month of January, had said, "Fix the mess and we'll come in."
No, they're not going to do it. That's like saying that...
So, that's your guess?
No. I know, I know from experience, from watching, that if somebody says that they don't run because of this, then that's probably not true. They're not going to run. You can, if you have...
Well, now, you're right. You may have the same trouble everybody's having with the volunteers getting on the equipment. I have people that are willing to come in and help immediately build up a new community feeling in the company, get the auxiliary going again privately, which I'm excited about, and have some action that actually is going to make a difference in my district. And that's what I want to do with change. Because doing what we've been doing for the past, how many years, got us nowhere, except downhill. If you look at the chart...
If there's somebody that's that charismatic that's going to make people flock out and start running calls, if that person or group of people existed, they'd already be in each one of these companies, and we wouldn't be having this discussion.
It's easy for you to say, "Yes, but I can't..."
It's not, now, don't look that, that back at me. Look at the, look at the facts. Every, every volunteer company in the country has problems like this. So, it's not going to happen. And if we come in heavy-handed and say, "We're going to appoint people that, that even some of y'all don't like because of past experiences with them," those people, you take a chance of driving people that may run away, people that are already running away...
Or done that.
And, but, I mean, we're talking about a problem that goes beyond volunteers. I mean, we have a physician who will no longer sign off on approvals for that company as it currently stands.
I understand.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a big deal, because that says that remaining static is not a solution, because that company will not get those endorsements absent change.
They were working, in my knowledge, they were working on a plan. That hasn't been presented.
They had the opportunity to bring a plan, but they did not.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know all the details, admittedly, but that, I don't believe that has been remedied, that concerns you.
That is true.
So, why don't we bring a plan, and I see this on the agenda for a minute?
The Public Safety Committee asked.
The Public Safety Committee did not recommend this action, Madam Chair.
Not this one, no. We're actually doing our job, as far as I'm concerned, and I am doing a job for Wakefield District.
With no advisory, neither of our advisory groups, we're taking...
How can you say that, actually?
No, no one of our advisory groups have recommended this action.
Not this particular action, but I hope we're the adults in the room that can do that.
But we don't, not one of us has any experience from the calls.
I'm the adult in the room that can live around and say, "I want to work with people, and I want them to get on board with what we do before we do it." I didn't start that compared to the damage area you did.
That's fine. I know what I've been living with for three-plus years now, and I'm not willing to keep doing it. So, let's call for the question bit, if I'm wrong or not.
So, the motion was to table on for another 60 days.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, seek input from a number of different people. We'll have to pull it off of the recording if I could get all that...
All the different suspects.
Yeah. All right. Have you got a motion, a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
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 All right. I would like to make a motion, but before we do it, Mr. Goff, would you read for everyone 27-13?
Section...
Yes. Oh, the resolution, sorry.
The resolution.
Yep. Because I want everybody to hear the resolution.
Do this in time?
Please, sorry. Do you need water?
Well, I might, but...
Sorry, it's not sore.
Resolution by the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia, appointing the Chief and other officers of the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company, Inc., pursuant to Virginia Code Section 27-13. Whereas the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company, Inc., here and after referred to as FHVFC, was founded in 1954 to provide firefighting services to Flint Hill and the surrounding area. And whereas the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company has a storied history of providing firefighting services to the community. And whereas the national and local trends acting to reduce the availability of volunteers to serve local volunteer fire and rescue companies has hampered the operations of Flint Hill to a severe degree over the last several years. And whereas frequent turnover of leadership and membership has led to a lessened degree of administrative and operational capability. And whereas the county of Rappahannock has entered into a fire and rescue EMS services agreement, the services agreement, with multiple volunteer fire and rescue companies located within the county to include Flint Hill. And whereas the services agreement includes a listing of the obligations of the county of the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association and the individual companies. And whereas the Rappahannock County Public Safety Committee performed a review of Flint Hill's service agreement obligations, the committee found that Flint Hill failed to meet many of the listed obligations, including call response requirements and maintaining good financial practices. And whereas the auditor hired by the county issued a finding that there exist material weaknesses in each of the four most recent Flint Hill audits. And whereas the Virginia State Police are currently investigating financial management concerns raised as a result of questionable requests for county funds. And whereas the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company call response rate has failed to meet the countywide response time objectives of responding within eight minutes and being on scene within 25 minutes 90% of the time, causing the county to place Flint Hill on a dual dispatch, requiring a second volunteer company to be alerted for all calls in the Flint Hill first due area. And whereas Flint Hill was licensed EMS agency providing basic life support services through two ambulances, but in February 2022 was forced to cease EMS services due to failed state inspections, and then subsequently failed to be recertified by the Virginia Office of EMS, causing their EMS license to expire on April 1st, 2022. And whereas the audit findings, the questionable request for public funds, the call response rates, and the loss of EMS license has caused doubt in the community that Flint Hill's leadership is capable of effectively delivering services to the community. And whereas the most recently reported membership of Flint Hill totaled fewer than 20 effective members, together with other listed deficiencies, is deemed sufficient cause for the board supervisors to dissolve Flint Hill pursuant to Virginia Code 27-10. However, whereas the county believes that it's in the best interest of the citizens and visitors to Rappahannock County, and specifically those in the Flint Hill Village area, that Flint Hill remain active and not be dissolved. And whereas Virginia Code 27-13 empowers this board supervisors to control the time and manner of appointment of the chief and other officers of Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company. And whereas, notwithstanding the certificate of incorporation dated 20 July 1954, and such documents having been ammendatory thereof, the board supervisors acting as the local governing body of Rappahannock County, find it is in the best interest of the citizens of and visitors to Rappahannock County, and specifically those in the Flint Hill Village area, that a new chief and new officers must be appointed to correct the enumerated deficiencies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors hereby evokes the authority granted to it pursuant to Virginia Code 27-13, all officers currently serving Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company are hereby removed from office, and the following individuals are appointed as the new officers to replace those removed by virtue here of who shall be seated immediately. There's a blank for chief, board of director one, board of director two, three, four, and five, with no names attached. Be it further resolved that the outgoing officers shall turn over to the chief appointed hereby all keys and access codes to the fire station located in 945 Fosstock Road, Flint Hill, and to all equipment and apparatus belonging thereto, and shall not remove or cause to be removed any equipment or property stored in or on premises. And be it further resolved that the outgoing officers shall turn over to the chief appointed hereby all credit cards, checks, financial account access information, such as usernames and passwords, and other means through which Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company funds can be committed and spent. And be it further resolved that the initial term of service for the appointed officers shall be one year. Appointment due to a resignation before the end of the initial term or reappointment at the end of the initial term shall be made by the board supervisors until such time that the board may direct otherwise. And be it further resolved that the period during which the board supervisors appointed officers are seated, the members of Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company shall have no power to replace the seated officers until such a time that this board may direct otherwise. And be it further resolved that the current members of Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company are encouraged to remain members of the company to serve the community in support of the enhanced leadership appointed hereby. And be it yet further resolved that the administrative and operational oversight and management of Flint Hill shall be vested with the officers slash board directors appointed hereby, who will not be subjected to unreasonable interference by the board supervisors, but who shall act in accordance with the following conditions. One, develop and submit to the board supervisors within 60 days for review requests for revision or acceptance, a revitalization plan, which shall include organizational structure, including both administrative and operational appointments made by the officers slash board directors appointed hereby. Uniform operational rank structure with documented chain of command, including defined roles and responsibilities of operational member assignments. Minimum required training and certification status for operational assignments and minimum training slash certification prerequisites for Flint Hill member use of apparatus. An analysis of the compliance of current Flint Hill bylaws and policies and procedures with Virginia Code Title 27, Chapter 2, and the services agreement, and a plan to amend the bylaws and policies and procedures to comply. An analysis of current occupational safety compliance, such as SCBA fit testing, and plan to put in place policies to remedy revealed compliance deficiencies. A financial management plan incorporating best practices in the following areas: receiving funds, disbursement of funds, account reconciliation, credit usage, cards and other forms of credit, procurement, fixed asset tracking, financial reporting, and processes to ensure the release of county payments as authorized by the fire level board. An analysis of the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company's membership ability to provide fire and rescue services using only volunteer firefighters. If a need for paid firefighters is identified, then the plan shall include requests for county funding to support the paid firefighters as part of a combined system, and include an estimate of the timeline for the use of the said paid firefighters. A plan to restore EMS service using the ambulances housed in the station. The plan shall, one, identify the need to use Rappahannock County's EMS license. The county board supervisors will not unreasonably withhold the use of the said license. Identify the need to supplement Flint Hill volunteer staffing with paid providers, and how these providers will be funded. And, three, identify the reasons for re-establishing Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company as an EMS agency pursuant to and in accordance with Virginia Code Section 32.1-111.4 COVID-7. And, four, include a timeline of actions necessary to provide EMS service, both in the short term and in the long term. Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company board of directors appointed hereby shall be responsible for the implementation of the plan. Nothing herein shall prohibit them from amending the plan and submitting an amended plan to the board of supervisors for their consideration. If the board of supervisors accepts a proposal to have Rappahannock County Fire and Rescue Department personnel assigned to the Flint Hill Station, the implementation of a combined operation shall be memorialized in a separate memorandum agreement between Flint Hill and Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors. Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company shall provide the board supervisors with an in-person update at each regularly scheduled board supervisor meeting until such time that the board may direct otherwise, followed by a matrix for a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I would like to make a motion that we accept the resolution for 27-13. The names I'd like to put forward for this resolution are Chief Dave Gerald, Board of Director Two...
Dave Flora.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Board of Director Two, Dave Bailey. Board of Director Three, Patrick O'Malley. Board of Director Four, Tim Bills. Board of Director Five, Dr. Hugh Hill. That is my motion.
I'll second your motion and note that we're shoveling the resolution centered on dissolution, and that, of course, is not in the public interest at all, and I'm glad to set that one aside.
I mean, we were never really having a deal with that.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Are any of those names individual present?
I'm sorry?
Are any of those names individuals present tonight?
I don't believe so.
None of them are here?
No, sure they're not.
I don't find that odd. They're so very concerned that they're not here tonight. I think that should be noted, hopefully, somewhere.
Ms. Donnelly, thank you for all of your effort on this front.
So, I do have another question now, under discussion.
Yes.
I was going to ask the question, have we done any, any budget or fiscal outlay for this? But it appears that these people that are going to be appointed have the obligation to come up with the financial plan for whatever it is that they're going to determine that they need to do as the new board directors.
Yes.
So, we're appointing people to this company, and then we're asking them to take on the physical challenge of trying to rebuild the company, and also come up with the fiscal outlay of, of that plan, and whether or not it will include paid staff and what the cost exactly.
I'm sure they'll have help, if we need help, if they need help.
Who will help?
I'm, they, or we. I would think, or, we should, we'll probably be willing to help them. I also know.
It doesn't say that, it says that they have the responsibility of doing it.
They do, but they can ask for help. I mean, there are a lot of people in the county that aren't in my district that have already said they will help, so.
They haven't been doing that either.
That's just a statement, sir.
Well, it's backed up by fact because they're not there. And they, they may come forward and do it, but they haven't before. And we don't know what the fiscal impact of our action, of, of this board's action tonight, we have no idea of the fiscal impact, my dear. And yet, we're putting five people in a position that's never held those positions, to my knowledge. And we're taxing them with the requirement to come up with that fiscal impact.
I can tell you, we have a fiscal responsibility right now going here to fire levy for services we're not getting. So I think giving this board a chance to do the job, we can, we're going to talk to you.
Well, I'm, I'm disagreeing with that. I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing out some deficiencies in the plan.
Okay. I'm just having a go at the plan.
No, it's your plan. We don't have a plan, it's your plan.
And I think she did a fantastic job doing it. I mean to do. And I don't mean that as a sleight, I mean that as a, it was, I, I, I got it and read it.
I, I just wish as a board that we had all had some empathy.
I'll just finish what I'm saying, which is that I read it and I thought, wow. It doesn't say, it says, "An analysis of Flint Hill's membership ability to provide fire and service, fire and rescue services using only volunteer firefighters." "If a need for paid firefighters is identified, then the plan shall include requests for county funding to support blah, blah, blah." Meaning volunteers. If you guys are going to mess around with wanting to pay for anybody, you've got to ask. I, I don't, I, I think doing anything like this is very difficult.
It is.
And that's our responsibility. And it is in her district.
It's our responsibility.
And she's trying to make sure that all the people that she's been hearing from that say, this is difficult.
I'm just saying.
I mean, and I think that I only support that company. I want to see it succeed genuinely as volunteers. I, I, I'm not, I'm being genuine.
I do.
I, I, I was in, I was in Trip 36, I would meet there every Tuesday. I have a direct connection with that place. And I only want to, and I think we all do, and I only want to succeed. Now, whether we have some policy differences over how we get there, I think this is a fantastic plan that has had a lot of work go into it, and I'm ready to vote on it.
I took it, I took my E and T training there twice. Two, two-year, four-year period.
I would just say, um, lessened is misspelled in the fourth paragraph. It should be E-N-E-B instead of lessened. Oh, and E-B. Fourth. And then, I, I just really, I have to say, I think it's hitting below the belt to bring up the Virginia State Police investigation. We don't know what the outcome of that investigation will be. I think we should strike that paragraph. It's a little bit of guilty until proven innocent.
Can you bring that paragraph up on the screen? Like I said, I don't want to pile onto it.
Which, where is it?
Um, it's the third paragraph from the bottom of page one.
It's just a matter of what's actually happening right now. And I think, being legislators, we are probably reasonable for putting it in. That is actually what's going on. And though it might be difficult to kind of deal with, it's true. I mean, what, what is, what was exactly the intention?
I just, I just think including that specter of police investigation in a resolution is a little bit of guilty until proven innocent. I didn't like the way I read it. And I, I'm asking you to strike it. If you choose not to strike it, that's entirely up to you.
We also had no involvement in writing of the resolution.
I, I don't think it impacts the resolution in any way, we're still doing this.
Current company four members have told you that they have separated individuals for doing these illegal acts. Um, so, I don't, I agree that nobody's been charged yet, uh, but I, I don't think it really is guilty improvement.
Proven innocent.
They've thrown people out of the company because they did illegal things under their watch.
Right.
That, that, they told us that.
To, uh, exactly to the point that the people that are in there now aren't the people. And I don't know everything that went on, but my understanding from hearing this is that the people that were responsible for things that went on at that time are no longer with the company. So to me, it's just a little hitting below the belt to put that in there. You want to put it in there, it's up to you.
David, I think the reason was that erosion of public confidence, company, but it's not, it's surplus, it's not required. It doesn't have to be there, and none of that's the point.
So, it's just public confidence, I guess. Yeah. All right. Um, any further discussion?
I just would like to say that I think it's very unfortunate that we don't have some sort of basis for evaluating the appointees. Um, I didn't get a list of the appointees until last evening from Ms. Donahue. Normally, when the board makes appointments to different bodies, we get information. She knows very well the structure, we get information well in advance about the appointee and opportunity to talk to those individuals and get familiar with their background and see what they bring to the table. That is not the case here. And I, I don't think as much as I would like to that I can live with just saying, well, Ms. Donahue's district and I don't care for her places. And, 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 uh, I just wanted to explain that.
Well, if I could just chime in on the end of that, their board appointments, they're not Ms. Donahue's appointments. And that's what you're asking me to do. Then I had no involvement.
But I, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
I mean, I asked Ms. Donahue very specifically along the same lines, what criteria she used for identifying these individuals in the process she went through to identify them, and how, how it came to pass that she accumulated a slate of names. So that was my way of, of trying to understand sort of the, the level of due diligence under her part. And I have a lot of confidence in what she did and what she explained to me, so. But I, I mean, I share your concern, I wanted to under, I wanted to understand the origin of these names, and like I said earlier, I'm grateful for the effort she put into it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
No, we're all.
Sorry, Mr. Goff. Mr. Craig. Ms. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Mr. Carney.
Aye.
And I also. All right. Motion for adjourned.
So, man.
Question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Send that tonight from you, first.